All right, good evening. Welcome to the November 12th meeting of the NICSa City Council. Call may need order, roll call please.
JRTs.
Here.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am going to move something around real quick on the agenda. As most of you can see on there, Doug Colvin, Retirement, so I figured he probably wants to get out of here as quick as he possibly can. So we're going to move that to the first real quick and go ahead and get that out of the way so he can go be retired. You know, a lot of people have heard me say multiple things about Mr. Colvin over the past couple of weeks and everything that he's done for this city and especially, I mean, everything with Public Works, but more importantly, our utility. A lot of people don't realize the benefits and the importance of NICSa keeping our utilities and keeping the ownership with the citizens. It really plays a huge part in things, especially when you hear other areas around the state that are getting insanely high electric bills. Some of you might remember back a couple of years ago, I believe it was Hurricane Yuri or Winter Storm Yuri, people were receiving very, very large, I mean, over a thousand dollars for one month of utilities. Well, when that happened, Mr. Colvin came to the council and said, you know, here's what's going on. We had a, what, $3.2 million increase in one day of what our power cost. The way that he has ran that department, we were able to cover that cost and not pass it on to the citizens. So it's, I can't say small things because that was a very large thing, but it was things like that that have put NICSa in the position we're in from not just utilities, but water, sewer, everything. He's always been forward-thinking. Definitely very, very large shoes to fill. And so we, you know, we had a little retirement party for him just recently and, you know, the city got him a gift and I told him, I was like, you know, that's just not big enough. I gotta find something bigger. So the council and I came up with, had discussed some different things and came up with an idea and those who know Mr. Colvin know he enjoys a glass of wine every now and again. So we did want to get him a parting gift. So we got a nice little wine decanter, has the NICSa Utilities logo on it, but the last thing, that just wasn't big enough, you know? So I found something else. I figured you can't have a wine decanter without a little bit of wine. And since Mr. Lyles isn't here, I went ahead and brought the wine in here. Because that's like his one rule is not no alcohol in City Hall. So I found this really small bottle of wine. And it's signed by the council members, "We truly appreciate everything you've done. Come get your wine and go home." Now to our presentations. First up, we have Ashley Copley with NICSa Public Schools to present Handle With Care.
Thank you for having us. We're excited to recognize your NICSa Police Department tonight. When they respond to a call and there are children on the scene, they notify the school by the bell the next day and what we receive is their name, what school they attend, and three words, Handle With Care. And I believe Summer has a video for us. And while she's pulling that up, can I get our two NPD guys to step up here?
So Handle With Care is a system that we use to submit brief information to the schools regarding students who may have been involved in a traumatic incident that involved police. So it is something that we use. There's no additional information about the incident given, but it does just notify the school that this child or this student has been involved in a potentially traumatic incident and has had police contact within the past basically 24 hours. I think it's important for teachers or members of the community to be aware that some students, some children
NICSa Police!
have different experiences than others. And oftentimes, those experiences can contribute to behavioral issues or performance in school. And so have an understanding that if you have a student who has had 10 of these Handle With Care notifications in the past six months and they've never had any before that and suddenly their grades are dropping, perhaps there may be other resources that this student needs to help them outside of school with some of those influencing factors that are maybe happening at home or elsewhere.
So the first thing I do is email all of their teachers and just let them know that they may be going through a challenging time and to reach out to me if they see them struggling. And if they don't, the kid just goes on with their normal day and I may never hear anything about it, but if they are struggling, sometimes they'll say, hey, I think you should check on them. And again, I don't say that we have any information, just do a general check-in to see if they want to talk or if they have anything going on. And then also, on the teacher end, they just appreciate knowing that information. So I have sometimes had teachers reach back out and say, hey, I'm so glad you told me because so-and-so was really struggling. They didn't want to be on task, they didn't want to put away their phone. I got your emails, so I just let it go for today. And so it's been helpful, I think, even on the teacher end, just to have that understanding.
Honestly, as police officers, we have to do a lot of reporting. We have a lot of forms we have to complete. This program is very simple, very quick, and very easy to navigate. It requires very little on the end of a police officer to create one of these submissions and does not require a lot of time or expertise to make the submission. So it is not a big barrier to get people to use it, at least within NICSa Police Department.
I almost love that we don't have the details because then it doesn't really matter. Like, it could have just been like a small incident or it could be something really traumatic and depending on the kid, some of them want to share and they want to process through that at school and other ones just want to go along their day. I mean, every kid is different, so, and sometimes the normalcy of school is great for them because they can just kind of detach, put that aside, and be able to be a kid. I think it's amazing that the community, NICSa PD, and the schools can connect on this level. And again, it's just wrapping those supports around kids, making sure that they have what they need. And so if other schools are not doing it, I would encourage them to do it. And it really is just overall good for the kid.
Thank you to NICSa Public Schools and Summer and Donovan for putting that video together. It turned out really awesome. So tonight, we have Tammy Walden with us. She's a very special guest. She's with the Missouri Juvenile Justice Association and she is who brought Handle With Care to NICSa and I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you to the City Council, to NICSa PD and NICSa Schools for the invitation to the Missouri Juvenile Justice Association. I did, Ashley, do you mind? I brought some brochures just so you guys could have an idea about what Handle With Care is. It is a statewide trauma response for children who have been subjected to events that might prove to be traumatic to them. I started my career in 1980 with the juvenile courts at Lake of the Ozarks and ended 40 years later. And one of the disturbing trends that we noticed statewide in juvenile justice is the age at which children are being referred to Missouri's juvenile courts is getting younger and younger all the time. We believe that that's directly correlated to exposure to trauma, sometimes chronic toxic trauma. So when Missouri Juvenile Justice Association first found out about Handle With Care and brought it statewide, we began introducing the concept to law enforcement agencies statewide. And NICSa PD was one of the first agencies to come on board. And I tell you, they created this video because I asked for a little PSA that I could use when I train other law enforcement agencies. I had an old one that the former sheriff in La Cleve County had done, but when Sheriff Milseff retired, I reached out out to NICSa PD and NICSa Schools and said, hey, would you do just like a tiny little PSA for me? I thought they were going to like sit at a desk and say, we do Handle With Care, it's great, you should do it, thanks. And you saw what I got. I have used that video across the state. I have trained hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of school personnel and law enforcement personnel and I use that video all the time. I could sum it up by saying, your police department and your school are my rock stars with Handle With Care statewide. Everybody knows who NICSa is. Well, they probably knew who you were anyway, but everybody knows who NICSa is now because I, seeing your praises, your praises, any chance I get, I will tell you that as of today, NICSa began making Handle With Care notifications in April 2023. And as of today, just NICSa Police Department has made 190 Handle With Care notifications to your schools. That is 190, well, probably 180, because some kids get more than one Handle With Care notification. That's a lot of students who have the benefit of having extra eyes on them at school as a result of having received that notification. When the schools receive the Handle With Care notification, it serves simply as an invitation for teachers and other officials at the child's school who have daily contact with the students to just observe the student and be aware that if the child becomes disruptive or dysregulated or maybe even disappears off the school's radar for a while, that it's an indication that there might be some underlying trauma and the school knows to respond then with trauma-informed strategies as opposed to maybe going straight to engaging the SRO or the juvenile courts or the discipline track. And so we're extraordinarily proud of the work that's been done in NICSa and we just wanted to share that with you guys so you could be proud too. So that's the brochure, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer any questions. But thank you so much to NICSa PD and NICSa Schools for engaging in Handle With Care.
And at last month's school board meeting, we were able to present the NICSa Police Department with this plaque and it says, "With gratitude to the NICSa Police Department from NICSa Public Schools for your compassion and support through Handle With Care." Last time I cried and I'm going to not cry this time, helping children heal, feel safe, and thrive. And Lieutenant Barton sat in my office a few months ago and I said, why, why do you take the time to do Handle With Care? And I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you remember what you said?
It's all about the kids.
He said, it's all about the kids. He said, before Handle With Care, I would show up to a call and there would be kids there and all I could do is report it to Family Services, but I never knew if there was going to be a follow-up to it. But he said, at least with Handle With Care, I know that someone has eyes on those kids the very next day and that they're loved and taken care of. And it was just pretty awesome. So we appreciate them taking the time and we appreciate them and that's 190 kids that we have eyes on. Thank you.
Ashley, I was a little upset you didn't wear your squirrel costume, but
Stay tuned.
Okay, all right. No, I think the partnership between the school and the city is definitely gotten a lot better over the years and this is just one of multiple programs that have been proven to be successful so far. So appreciate you guys. Okay. Next up, we have Whitney Gieson and Taylor and anybody else? Whitney and crew.
Whitney and crew. I wish we were first because that was a really hard one to follow. I was a little teary-eyed myself, actually, but we'll pull it together. All right. I'm Whitney Gieson and this is Taylor Guestman and we are here to talk to you guys about Explore NICSa. This is a long time coming and we're going to get into it. We're not going to take up too, too much time, but we want to make sure that any questions you guys might have about what we're proposing is get answered today. Want to start in?
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Whitney. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council staff. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. I just wanted to kick it off a little bit with an intro of myself and the few hats that I'm wearing, approaching you all with this. I'm Taylor Guestman. I'm a destination strategy director with an agency that works with destinations. So that's a lot of words to say that I bring some marketing expertise because I work with communities, public, private entities, communities who have convention and visitors bureaus or tourism boards all around the country. But I also wear the hat of a small business owner here in NICSa that just celebrated five years, Rocco's Pizza, shout out. The hat of a board member of the NICSa Downtown Revitalization Group for the past four years and the hat of a new mom, very vested in the future of NICSa. So I say that because I wanted to give you guys a little bit of background on destination management and what that is. And because our initiative with Explore NICSa is really setting that strong foundation for destination management, since we don't have a destination management organization, this is an ask for us to put a committee together and build that foundation with those kind of key tenets, which is a principle that's pretty simple. The strategic engine of good city management that takes consistency, recognition, and great experiences to allow our local businesses to thrive and apply them to NICSa as a whole when it comes to visitors of NICSa, their first impression of NICSa, helping us have just a consistent message and creating a strong reputation and a solid experience because that creates stability and success for new visitors. And a lot of times when people visit and they have a great experience, they want to live here, they want to work here, and they want to come back. So I think that gives us a little bit of foundation to kick some things off. I'll kick it back over to Whitney.
Okay, so we probably, Taylor might have made everyone a little bit nervous because she's like, destination management, NICSa Missouri? And we're like, that makes no sense. NICSa's small and we are not a tourist destination, which we completely recognize. So the question becomes, why are we talking about bringing visitors to NICSa now? I'm just going to jump right into the next slide here. If you haven't already heard, there's a lot of things happening in 2026. So Route 66 Centennial Celebration is happening and Springfield has been named the host city? Host? Birthplace. See, my whole crew is here supporting. So they are pushing very, very hard to bring visitors there because they are, they're just staging themselves to be able to have a huge influx of people in 2026. It's also America's 250th Celebration. Branson is pushing very hard, the 250th Celebration content. They're even planning on breaking world records as far as how many flags are going to be flown in one area in one day or something like that. So they are staging themselves to be a host city for visitors internationally and nationally who want to visit America on their 250th birthday, basically. Also, the World Cup is happening in Kansas City in the end of June through the beginning of July. And if you've been paying attention to any of that stuff, basically, people are booking hotels all the way to Branson for that event and international visitors stay an average of 30 days in the area. So they're going to be looking for things to do and they're not going to be doing 30 days worth of stuff in Kansas City. So where are they going to go? They're going to go to the places pushing them to come visit and the places that are pushing them is Springfield and Branson. So there's also the 20th anniversary of the movie Cars, yay, not doing anything with that. And hopefully, NICSa High School is doing something with their 100th anniversary. Point is, there's a lot going on next year. And more importantly, we are sitting right between two cities that are dropping big dollars on bringing visitors. And in order to get from one to the other, one of the pathways is right through NICSa. So talking about, there we go. We got this information over a year ago. We put together a committee, the top five people on that committee were the original committee members. We sat down and said, do we do anything with this information or don't we? I mean, are we able to even invite people to NICSa? What are our assets? What would people do when they were here? We decided that we were going to do some work to figure out the answers to those questions. We invited Matt Graham, Summer, and Donovan into the committee. As you can see, the committee is made up of local business owners, city employees, NICSa natives, marketing specialists, of course, destination management, a strategist, and local business owner. And then me, which is cool too. So we had a great committee. We started early, early. We started over a year ago, like I said. And in the last year, we have done a brand workshop to figure out what the answers to those questions, what would we offer people if they were to come? We created the Explore NICSa logo, which you see on every slide and in your packets as well. Donovan was very integral in creating that. We were very grateful for the city kind of loaning him out to us to figure out that simple but eye-catching logo. We created a marketing plan through bringing in certain professionals. All of this, by the way, is just people volunteering time because they recognize the importance of what we're doing. We have partnered with Show Me Christian County. They've already set up Explore CC Mo, which is its own tourism website. So they are going to be hosting an Explore NICSa page that connects to that page so we can all be driving traffic and kind of working in tandem. So we're not, we don't have to reinvent wheels. Some people are already doing stuff and we're piggybacking off of the work that's already been done. We've created a Branson CDB partnership. Basically, a lot of the heavy lifting they're doing, we have partnered with them, basically. One of the big things is they are bringing in a Harley-Davidson conference to Branson at the end of 2026. They need day trip itineraries. So the NICSa Chamber and Show Me Christian County have been working together to create an itinerary that the bikers can take through Christian County. It would start in Ozark, jump over to NICSa, and go back up through Highlandville to kind of let them have things to do while they're hanging out in Branson. And we hope to see more of those kinds of things grow. So I ran through that really quick, but I hope that it helps you guys understand, we didn't just decide to do this yesterday. We got together with a lot of, not a lot, a small group of influential people who could see the vision and started doing some work to figure out what can we do, what is our messaging, what do we want to do? And people really just volunteered their time and efforts and we've come a very, very long way. So the plan that we kind of came up with, and this is all very high-end, we're not going to get into the nitty-gritty of it unless you really want us to, but the high-end marketing plan is we would launch this March 2026. April through July would be America's Only NICSa campaign. That's come experience small-town America. We are the only NICSa in the world. If that doesn't attract people who are running around here not from this area, I don't know what will. July through September, Take the Scenic Route campaign, that is really targeting lategoers, Route 66 visitors. And then the entirety of 2026 will be Explore NICSa organic content, just building our socials and our visitation to the website and things like that. We would also like to be able to have the website running the whole year and billboards that would just start introducing people to the Explore NICSa brand. You can jump in if I'm missing anything, by the way. Oh, okay, cool. Oh, I went too far too fast. So this is just a big, we have done so much work on the ground already and we've done it with zero dollars. We're really excited to be able to basically take this to the next level in 2026. Now is that if we're going to figure out tourism for NICSa, which I know we're not a big tourist destination, we probably never will be, what we've kind of landed on is we want to invite people to spend a meal in NICSa. Both hyper-local people, regional people, and visitors who are visiting Branson and Springfield, they're already going to be here, those areas are already doing the heavy lifting. We have to do a little bit of effort and hopefully bring people in for that meal with their families while they're on their way somewhere else. We don't expect people to come and stay a bunch of nights. That's not what we're trying to do. Our goal is to have people come and spend a meal, maybe do a little bit of shopping while they're here, and then move along their way to the places that really attracted them and did all the big marketing dollars. So we just want to do that little push. All right, turn it back over to you.
Yeah, Whitney really said it best. I mean, we just want to show them some hospitality and we want to do that in a bit of a cohesive way. So the first impression is really strong. And that's what a lot of the work that this committee, the brand discovery workshop that we did together, kind of tying together like what could be for this initiative, a tourism messaging initiative only, what it could be, a cohesive message. And that will be an investment in the local economy for NICSa and in resident quality of life. So I want you to keep that in mind because when we're bringing people to have an additional meal or check out NICSa, you know, the visitor's sales tax, that boosts our local economy from visitors coming in, you know, them spending retail dollars, them spending money with restaurants here, and that benefits our community in the long term. Because Springfield and Branson are making major investments, they both have convention and visitors bureaus and they both have dedicated tourism initiatives and entities, but they're literally spending millions of dollars, marketing especially for Route 66 and America 250. So we do feel there is a bit of a sense of urgency with this year ahead of us to strike while the iron's hot, bit of that rising tide lifting all ships, because people are going to come here. They're going to be passing through NICSa and wouldn't it be great if they had a navigable way to see our key attractions, our key entertainment, and our key dining and retail, which you'd be surprised, we actually have quite a bit of great things. People just need somewhere to eat and they'll stay a little bit longer if they have somewhere to walk around, downtown, somewhere to shop, other great things, or something to do, like great investments that we have in arts and culture. So this messaging allows us to have that and have some content about that. So we're not necessarily exclusively focusing on one specific attraction or the other. This gives us some breadth to focus on all of it as a whole. It's collaborative too. I will mention with my hat on the Downtown Association, the Downtown Board has unanimously voted to contribute to this as well, contingent on the city's contribution. So the NDRC voted to invest $3,000 contingent on the city's investment, which would contribute to this goal as a whole and the marketing efforts. Anything I'm missing? whole and the marketing efforts. Anything I'm missing?
So our goal is to get visitors and residents of Springfield and Branson to spend a meal in Nixa. That's the goal. We know that we're talking about international visitation, and we're talking about people that would be going to Branson or Springfield. But there are a lot of new Nixa residents, too, or Springfield residents that don't know about Nixa that would become familiar with this. And since we also have a component of this proposal that would include a business owner toolkit, I think that's important to highlight that we've created some, some ways for the community to embrace this and utilize this messaging effectively. So it's not sitting in a silo, and it's something that can be embraced. And we're asking the City of Nixa to support these efforts this year, this coming year financially in the amount of $15,000. And now, when we take into consideration that amount, I, I understand that is a large ask. But we also take, we're taking into consideration the momentum that we have in 2026 and the volunteer time and effort and the brand discovery that we've done to this point. Wearing my hat as a business owner, I know every marketing dollar is really important, and you have to be a good steward of those, of those funds. And wearing my hat as a destination marketing, marketing strategist, I know that we've already invested a lot of time and effort into making sure we're being strategic. And if we were to hire a firm to do some of the work that this committee has already done, it would be in between $50,000 and $100,000 in the, the hours and professional work that's already been put towards this. And the collaboration with Show Me Christian County, the Downtown Association, this shows an opportunity of true collaborative effort. And driving traffic to something that's already got great momentum, Show Me has set up a fantastic website. And now we just need to, we've built it, and let's get them ready to visit us.
I'm not going to spend a lot of time on just the breakdown. You have that in your packet as well. And, and these numbers are not set in stone either. If we were to get this funded, we would have to grab or create a new committee that would manage it, figure out the best place to put dollars, as well as any kind of trade we could get available, things like that. So it's a, it gives you an idea of kind of what we're talking about, but I, I wouldn't marry yourselves to this, this right here. We are, have a way of measuring our success. Obviously, we would want to look at certain KPIs to make sure that we are actually doing something beneficial. So we're looking at traffic counts, you know, ticket sales, downtown visitation, things like that to see, are we doing it? Are we doing something? Are we not? So there are ways that we would be able to determine as the year progresses, is this working, is it not working? And then Taylor already mentioned bringing in the businesses and basically providing for them, marketing packets that they could use if they wanted to tie into the messaging that we would be doing. We would love to see kind of a uniform approach from our, our businesses in Nixa, if they wanted to. We're not going to force them to do anything, but this would just be something we could offer to them. Hey, this is what we're doing in these months. Here's a logo, here's a color scheme, here's some phraseology you could use if you wanted to, here's what you can do in your business to help support, things like that, that they can take or leave. It's entirely up to them. But it would be a nice support for them to be able to take it and say, "We want to tie into this initiative. We see the, we see the value in it." All right. Whew. We would love to answer any questions you have.
My first question, you mentioned that if you got the funding, a new committee would be formed to manage that, and I'm guessing all the deliverables. How, what's your plan as far as creating that committee? Who are you looking to be on it? Would it be the original people plus some, or what's that look like?
So I would love to see as many of the original who would want to stay on continue on. I haven't actually asked them, so I don't know what they would say. But I think that we would have to make sure that it's a, it's a good blend of the different entities here in this community. So business owners, the, somebody from the city, somebody from the Chamber, the different nonprofits, like the Downtown Group, could be involved as well. But make sure that we have the, the larger goal in mind that everyone has, which is we're not here, we're here to figure out the best way to promote Nixa, not any singular business or entity or organization or event. And that was the, that was the first conversation we had with the committee is, can, can everyone in the room do that? Can we look and say, it doesn't matter that I own Rocco's, and we might be promoting 14 Mill. It's what promotes Nixa best. So we would, we would be very open to suggestion as far as who, who could, who's the best person to do that and have them sit on the committee?
Cool. I'm sure Mr. Graham would donate all his time.
Do you want to finish your questions?
Oh, go ahead.
You talk about the highlighting the campaigns and stuff like that, highlighting businesses. Do you guys have specific businesses already in mind that you're going to highlight, or are you looking to highlight all the businesses in Nixa?
Go for it.
We, through the brand discovery, and through any brand discovery, when you work with a destination, you identify what are the key drivers of traffic. So there's certainly the ATO Center, 14 Mill, and Downtown as key areas that drive traffic, that pique interest. But we have been very, we want to make sure that we're very cognizant of the overall arching message that Explore Nixa is a place to eat, dine, and shop. And there's other things to do besides those three locations, those three general locations. There may be ways, times where we would be leaning on some of those, some of those locations, and those are just simply examples, as deeper content or deeper hooks to get people interested, especially since ATO Center as part of our KPIs, seeing if we have a lift in ticket sales would be something that we would measure. But our goal is to get the conversation going, create engagement, create social media engagement. So there's going to be a lot of content that we need to be producing and that we would be consistently creating throughout the year. So it gives us an opportunity to highlight multiple businesses instead of just one in particular, or one location, and not necessarily focusing only on businesses, but regions and things to do.
Does that answer the question?
Does that answer your question?
Have you identified a way to get in contact with the businesses that might not be Chamber members or people that just haven't really been involved in the community yet?
Well, I walk into a lot of businesses, and I might just do that.
We appreciate that, by the way.
I know that the city could be instrumental in also giving us contact information for people who have business licenses out there that may not be Chamber members. There's definitely avenues. We've utilized lists like that before to try and connect with businesses. And we can do our best efforts. I can't promise that every single business is going to hear about this or know because they may not care to. But we will do our best efforts to reach out to everyone, get everyone on board.
And so you asked for $15,000 from the city, and the Downtown Committee is going to chip in $3,000. What, what does the overall budget look like? What, what kind of number are you guys shooting for as far as?
$100,000. Sorry. No. We've, we've, we've made a, a general plan for the $15,000, but that is bare bones. If we have to scrape something together, this is what we're going to scrape together. So anything above and beyond that that we can pull in will only bolster what we're talking about.
Okay, so it's not necessarily like the businesses chipping in some marketing dollars of their own, per se? Or is it just, you're welcoming anybody who would like to participate or to contribute?
Yes. So, so the marketing packet and stuff that we're providing to businesses, that's just, please join us in this effort. There's, it's not going to require them to pay into it. And part of that, honestly, is kind of what Taylor was talking about. We need to identify the areas within Nixa that we're promoting in any given campaign. And that might not be all the businesses that have the marketing packet or even buying into it yet, like using it or utilizing it. Since we can't walk around and promise that every single person's going to get a shout-out on the social media or on a billboard or something, I wouldn't ask all the businesses to pay into this, per se. It's not a sponsorship-type deal. Now, if there are businesses, I, I would love to go and find other entities that are, that want to donate to the cause because they recognize the benefit of promoting Nixa as a general rule. But no, it won't cost a business anything for us to do what we're doing, unless they just love what we're doing and they just want to give us a donation, which would be great.
So that's my question. So can businesses possibly pay to advertise their business on these brochures or websites or anything? As a way to generate revenue?
So I know that Show Me Christian County already has that feature on their website. So that's already available to businesses, and we would let that probably still be managed through Show Me Christian County's Explore CC Mo website.
So I was thinking, we've got Airbnbs and Bed and Breakfast that people don't know about unless they go to sites, and since we have one hotel.
And, and that, that's all already on Show Me Christian County's website. So that's, that content is already out there and is available to businesses. So like I said, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. Like, people are already doing some of that work. We're not here to redo what Show Me Christian County is already doing.
Good.
Yeah. For free.
For free.
Something said for free in my ear.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to generate revenue for you all.
I appreciate that.
I, I see this as being, you know, when you run a business, you often get into sponsorship-type deals that you might not have your logo placed on things because you're still going to benefit somehow. And so I think after the first year, and it's very successful, you'll get people who want to invest in that because it was worth it for their business. It helped bring people into Nixa. And so I could see that being more of a thing. I mean, just like Show Me, really. That's kind of, you see the benefit in it, not necessarily having your logo out there, but being involved and being in the know and bringing business to you, so.
Mentioned that you want more visitors, and you just want them to spend a meal in Nixa. How many additional meals are you hoping to attain with this?
I honestly, Sean couldn't tell you. I don't know. Do you have a number?
Well, I don't have a number, but I will say that, wearing my Rocco's hat now, that anytime there's an event, or anytime there's some messaging to come to Nixa, I'm going to say Sucker Days, for example, the sales that we have is significantly more than, you know, our baseline sales. It, we have a, we see a direct correlation of any cohesive messaging about come to visit Nixa for Sucker Days, or anything, Culture Fest recently that was in downtown area. We benefited as a business, so more meals happened. Now, we're not measuring this on an ROI based on every, you know, restaurant's tax collections or anything, but I think that it's creating a conversation for people to navigate of all of the different things to do. And the fact that there's going to be additional content out there on social media for that to be shared out, we'll be able to measure that and the impact that would have. So in addition to meals, we'll be measuring shares, likes, reach overall, and website traffic, of new website traffic to what we send up, send to this.
I think it's important to also recognize, this would be a foundational year for something like this. So we don't have anything to measure against besides the nothing that is now, you know? So it's just really hard to say, we want to see 15,000 extra meals in Nixa. Could you tell them, I don't even know how many meals are spent in Nixa now, you know? So it's just, this would be that kind of year that where we start creating those baseline measurements to say, okay, where do we go from here?
It's a kind of a monumental year, not just because of the first year, but then because of all the other activity that's going on.
I know.
It's going to be an asterisk next to it as well.
This was a very special first year.
Exactly.
Do you like do two meals at once, like social chicken on a Rocco's pizza?
Yes. And that goes back to where I was asking kind of about, you know, specific businesses. I mean, you've mentioned downtown and 14 Mill and Rocco's and stuff quite a bit of time, social as well. I mean, but we do have lots of other restaurants in town as well that, I mean, if, if we're trying to get to be a meal, then having, making sure that there's focus on all, not just a portion of those, I think would be helpful. The other part of that, too, is just talking about return on investment. I mean, we're, you're asking that we spend $15,000 of taxpayer dollar. Just some simple math, at eight and a half percent tax revenue, I mean, that's $2.55 on, for, on a $30 ticket roughly, on a check average. And so you're looking at about six, between $5,500 and $6,000 meals additional to return that investment. So, I mean, if you're, that's why I asked the question of how many meals.
Then that's the number, 6,000.
6,000's the number? I think that's a very low number, though.
Do 12,000. If you get two at once, then...
There you go.
But honestly, going with what he's saying, you know, we do, everyone up here has to answer for the, the money that's spent. So what, what does it look like as far as reporting? And how often would you be able to provide that to the council and myself?
We, we could, we could definitely, so we actually had this conversation with Jimmy earlier as well. And we could bring back some of those KPIs to you. Some of them, we wouldn't be available every month or something like that, particularly the sales tax portion. That would act, well, you guys would have that before, we would. So, but the other ones, like using Placer and things like that, we could bring that back as, as often as council would like to hear it. I don't know if you want that to be part of every single council meeting or monthly meeting or quarterly. We, we would be happy to bring back those KPIs as often as you would want to hear them.
And that can honestly, that could be, it could be an email. Like, we're not looking to micromanage anything, just so we have an understanding of what, where the money's going. Is there a return on it? Are people seeing? And even if it's, you could tell me, yeah, I've seen an uptick in business. It's great. Like, that's good enough for me, really, because it...
There's definitely going to be anecdotal things that we'll hear, right? But we'll be measuring the website traffic, the social shares. But then we'll also be holding the vendors accountable for return on ad spend, because some of this is media dollars that are going to be spent. And so those media vendors will be providing us reporting, which we would roll up and provide to you guys the highlights of that. In addition, in addition to, Placer AI provides visitation data. So you're going to see how the ads are performing, return on ad spend, how the social media, the organic things that we're building, website traffic, and then actual visitation from Placer, which will show the foot traffic that came into the area.
Do you have any concerns right now as far as timing? And, because I would, I mean, I've kind of been in a lot of the conversations that you've been in with everything that's happening next year, as far as timing with getting billboard space and things like that? Because I know that Branson and Springfield are probably going to be taking over a lot of that.
So the sooner we have answers to this, the, the better. We already have emails out to different billboard companies with pricing and, like, we're ready. We just need the funds. So I think the, the faster we get an answer and the faster we get funding, the, the better. But yes, the longer it takes, the, the more worried we would get that all the good spots are gone. So, yeah.
Gotcha.
Taylor, you mentioned that whenever there's a, a targeted event, a bike sucker days, I mean, you see an uptick in business. With this being more of a year-long campaign, or let's say, three-fourths a year-long campaign, since we won't roll it out until March, how are you going to kind of see that uptick, like, that's so condensed, you know, at, at that one point in time? I mean, do you fulfill, do you feel like you'll have a periods throughout the year that you'll see more of an uptick than you will other periods? Or you feel like it's going to be just spread out the entire time?
Are you just going to base it off of those huge events that are happening, like when Springfield does their Route 66 thing and the World Cup?
Do you mean for visitation or for likes?
Yeah, because we talked, you, you mentioned that businesses see an uptick whenever there's the promotion of come see Nixa Sucker Days, right?
Right.
Obviously, that's a two-day event, highly populated quickly. Of course, you're going to see an uptick in business there. Where this is going to be, there's different events throughout the year, and they're spread out over the year. You're going to have some that are very popular events, some that are not. I mean, the, again, the World Cup is going to be a month long, but it actually is happening in Kansas City, so we're going to have people passing by to and from those times. So are you expecting to see it just during certain times of the year? Are you looking for that uptick to happen all year long?
We're expect, we would like to measure it overall impact over year, throughout the year, especially since we've got it broken out into, it's one big campaign of Explore Nixa messaging, but we've got it broken out into a few different messaging strategies marched through at the end of the year. So driving the traffic with that messaging, and since we know that there's going to be a little bit of brand and, brand awareness and introduction, so that kind of conversion funnel, it'll take some time before we get that exact conversion. We have some events, some key events that we can measure against prior year, but looking at the traffic year over year, we'll probably do year-over-year comparisons of throughout the whole campaign.
Any other questions?
Mayor and Council, really quick. I did speak with Mr. Lyles regarding this topic. And as you all know, we're in the middle of our budget season, and the budget is going to be tight this year. Staff's recommendation, if council does decide to move forward with this project, that we request that the funds be taken out of the Economic Development Reserve account rather than regular funding, because we do have funds set back for economic development and reserve account savings. That's the reg, staff's recommendation on this.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anything else you guys would like to add?
Go Nixa.
I really appreciate you taking the time to come here and really give us a lot more information. I, no offense to Mr. Lyles, but it was transferred a little bit... Um, I no offense to Mr. Lyles, but it was transferred a little bit better than just him and I's conversation, so.
I'm not surprised.
Kind of the telephone game, so.
That's why we're here.
I really appreciate it, and I also appreciate everything you guys are doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. And congratulations on the new addition to your family. That's awesome. This one isn't going to be fun. All right. Two thousand twenty-six budget draft. Mrs. Evans?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to go over quickly just what has changed in the budget um from the last time it was presented on October twenty seventh, I believe. Um, so there haven't been that many changes, but a few, so I will point those out. Um, we didn't make any changes in the revenue, no changes in the personnel, um, other than what was presented last time. In the operations, um, we had to increase the amount for our property and liability insurance. Originally, we we didn't know, so we just budgeted for a twenty percent increase, but our actual premium estimate came in and it's a thirty seven percent increase, so we've had to um, adjust the budget for that. And then we increased the professional fees in the water and legal departments, twenty-five thousand each. And then we took out one of the projects that I added last time because we weren't sure we were going to get the equipment before the end of the year, but that equipment was delivered, so we will be able to pay for that this year. And so we took that capital project out. So the bottom line is that in the general fund, our estimated unrestricted ending balance is three million four hundred eighty thousand dollars, four hundred eighty nine hundred ninety-five dollars. And then the ratio of revenue to expense, this is all the revenues in relation to all of our expense excluding capital is ninety-eight point three five percent. In the street fund, um, the estimated unrestricted ending balance is six hundred fifty thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars. And the ratio of revenue to expense in that fund is fifty-one point nine five percent. In the electric fund, the estimated unrestricted ending balance is eight million eight hundred ninety thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars. And the ratio of revenue to expense is ninety-two point seven five percent. In the water fund, the estimated unrestricted ending balance is two million three hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred nineteen. And the ratio of revenue to expense in the water fund is ninety-one point zero eight percent. And in the wastewater fund, estimated unrestricted ending balance is ten million one hundred seventy-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-nine. Keep in mind that the majority of that is um, bond proceeds that we have budgeted, so that's why that's so high. And the ratio of revenue to expense in this fund is seventy-two point two two percent. So that was a lot of numbers thrown at you all at once. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about any of that information.
Do you be sending out like an updated um worksheet for us to review and
Yes.
and kind of the breakdown of the the um, CIPs and and personnel and all that kind of stuff, what we are going to do and what we're not going to do?
Yes, I will. I I'm waiting to get all of the changes done before I start putting the budget book together because you make one change and it changes like fifteen different pages, so I don't want to do that over and over again. Trying to get it. And once I have that done, I will send that out for sure, and it will have all the detailed information.
Okay, thank you.
I think where we're at now leaves a little bit of wiggle room for something else that might come up. Yeah, I mean, it's it's not too far from where we were last year, correct?
Yes, it's very close.
Okay.
We're we're typically in between the ninety-six and ninety-eight percent ratio revenue to expense ratio.
So just in case we need to spend six hundred thousand dollars to fix a sewer issue. No, too soon? Sorry.
I do know that Mr. Lyles does plan to review the budget again and see if there are any further cuts that we can make.
Gotcha. Well, I will say I'm compared to what I thought we were going to be at, I am I'm definitely pleased with where we're at now, so. Having a, I mean, and I do appreciate everyone's uh, being a Grinch and cutting so many things this year. Yeah, part of it. It's no fun, but part of it. Any questions? I think we're good. Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up is our visitors section. Mrs. Coffey, did we have anybody fill out a visitor's card?
Yes, Scott Jones.
Scott Jones, one ninety-four Shady Oak, NIXA. Came here tonight because apparently emailing and phone calls to Ward Three representatives and the mayor are a waste of time. Uh, because you don't get anything, you don't get return calls or return emails. I'll take that back. Last October, I did leave a message for you, Ms. Morris. You called me back on Christmas Day when I was with my family. So trash carts. Uh, you and I have had this talk before. I and I hundred percent as a retired government employee from another city. You know, I totally agree with education before enforcement. But your ordinances are a joke if there's no enforcement. When you have the continual habitual issues that people leave their carts on the street four days out of the week when there are seven days in a week, and your ordinance says night before you got till midnight the next night, you know, the day of pickup. You got the habitual ones who also tend to be the ones who need the other stuff with code enforcement. And you got a great code enforcement guy, except for the fact your ordinances are so they are written so poorly. I can have my trash cart be a yard ornament in my front yard, the way it's written. All it says is got to be off the street and be on your property. It can be a yard ornament. Doesn't have to be up by your house or anything, but if I want to do a compost pile, it's very specific. This size, all this, and has to be in the backyard. So it's pretty dumb, in my opinion. And when you've got your code enforcement guy also trying to do animal control and we got no backing, we're worried about education, not enforcement, when you've got habitual stuff. Uh, you know, I understand your job, you had Chamber here earlier. Your job is to balance the needs of the taxpayers, the residents, and bring in business. You got to deal with the businesses and everything. That's how you're funded. Uh, but between that and there are four of you that I don't get to vote for, that all voted to cram that Dollar General in my neighborhood where we've had police call for shots fired because of a robbery and somebody brandishing a weapon within six months of it being opened. And the three near miss accidents I've had uh between my wife and kids with the increased traffic, I don't approve of the job you're doing and that balance. I see you as being uh puppets of the chamber. That's why I can't vote for four of you, but I can go donate dollars to anybody that runs against you or campaign for them. And when I got somebody whose email doesn't work, somebody who calls me on Christmas Day and somebody who doesn't bother returning stuff anymore, I wouldn't expect to vote for me. As a retired city employee, I know how that stuff goes. So when there's a tax issue or anything, my vote no is not against the employees because we got some really good employees in NIXA that I've dealt with. My vote no will be against the seven of you. Thank you.
George Williams.
I'm here about Daisy's Imagination Station. Hi, Mr. Jerry.
How you doing, sir?
I'll play this for you. That's one minute out of an eight-minute recording. Eight minutes out of a whole day that we have to hear that. We wake up to this. They wake us up. I was here in twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-two, I called NIXA PD and the officer was nice enough to tell me if I didn't like it, I had to move. Made me out to be like I was I was the problem. Since then, I came here last year or in twenty twenty-four to, you remember, I sat here and begged you to put a stop to this. Since then, they have, it's madness. It is, we are prisoners in our own home, literally. The rocks, Carla lives in between me and the daycare, they're throwing, you see the size of those rock? Did you see those rocks? Wonder if one of those little kids pick up a rock and hit another one in the eye? I've contacted the Department of Education and reported them, and they are going to look into this. But I mean, they're throwing rocks, they're throwing stuff in Carla's yard. She has a little dog that could be hurt potentially. I'm in next door to Carla. Can you imagine what she's hearing every day in her home? That's from my bedroom window. That's how I wake up in the mornings. This is ridiculous. I, last year, the emails are in there that I emailed you last year. I had, I went into AFib. I would get so stressed during the day from all that screaming all day long. My heart would start racing. I ended up going into AFib and they couldn't bring me out of it. I went to a the two-hour ablation that was supposed to be five hour, it was five hours and I almost died. I was in ICU. I emailed you and said, hey, they're over here screaming. I've just had an ablation. It's in there. It's in the packet. Please put a stop to it. They're throwing rocks in Carla's yard. I know you did. I know you contacted that owner because it would get quiet over there for about two weeks. It would be back to nothing like it used to be when I first moved into that home. It was so quiet and they were so respectful. Since twenty twenty, they've lost their ever-loving minds. It is so loud. So I called, uh, you told me in the last email. Called police. Well, I did. I I suppose that was supposed to be a deterrent to them. Well, it wasn't. They thought that was funny and they've been harassing us and letting the kids out earlier to scream in at seven fifteen in the morning, thirty-six degrees, because I emailed Jana Barton, Department, I'm like, can they do that? She's like, yeah, they can be out there in thirty-two degree weather. But I mean, just who does that? Just to get even with someone for calling the police? This officer, Officer McKeer, I filed the report with, went over and had a talk with the owner. By the way, your officer in twenty twenty-two was so rude. These new officers that you have, these young guys, they are so respectful and professional. I just really appreciate that. And um, so anyway, he went over, had a talk with him. He recorded my statement. I gave him a written report. He's turned that into the prosecuting attorney, which I don't see anything happening there. Uh, I don't have much faith in that, but uh, he said that he told her about the rocks and that um, they were going to try to work on the noise. That was two weeks after the police were there. Does that sound like she's working on the noise? Did you hear the bang, 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 bang on metal? You think what? They're hitting those little metal jungle gyms with their fists? That's rocks. Uh-huh, those rocks. Did you see the size of the? Look at all the pictures of the size of those rocks. Me and Carla, we keep our lawns immaculate. Those aren't rocks from our yard. And the the last rock, that biggest one, was three foot from her bedroom window. So anyway, I'm just, you know, they either need to move. They have no business if they're going to scream like that being budded up to our homes. There's two more homes behind me, and I know that people behind me are retired. They're hearing this, too. Or they need to, someone needs to make them be quiet. Nowhere in NIXA statute does it say under noise ordinance that we make exceptions for the daycare. Or in the Missouri State Law for Peace Disturbance, does it say we make an exception for the daycare? Or they need to have times that they let them out, short times, not all day. They don't need to be out there all day screaming. You know, thirty minutes, what do they do in the uh, twice a day, recess twice a day, maybe? You know, let them out twice a day. But no, from four to six o'clock, they put them out there right when we're settling into our evening routine and they're screaming. We got to listen to that. In the morning, that's what we wake up to. On nice days, it's from seven fifteen to eleven. It might get quiet for a couple hours, it might not, but then from three to five, four to five, it's madness. I mean, please, guys, do something about these people. Because obviously she don't care and she thinks it's funny. I mean.
Yeah, after you sent your last email.
I'm I've been talking to an attorney on what to do because I'm building a case against her, whether she knows it or not. I can't sue the city, I know that, but I'm building a case against her. The police reports, I have so much audio. It's for days screaming and yelling. And uh, I just want to stop. We have the right to live in our home. And P, I don't party, I don't do drugs, I don't play my rock and roll music, you know, on the loudest setting. I'm quiet. I like peace and quiet in my home. Carla's quiet. She's a quiet neighbor. I feel sorry for her. I just, you heard that. That's just an example. There's more of that every day. So please, I'm asking you again for the second time, do something about this.
I did talk to him, got your last email, and then I've been talking with um well, planning and development and code enforcement, and I did talk to the owners again last week, so we'll keep doing, I'll I'll keep at it, keep doing what I can.
All right, I appreciate it.
And thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
You want your rocks back?
Yeah.
Barbara Kachko.
My name is Barbara Kachko. I live at five four three Juniper Road, Ozark, Missouri. And I own the house that my son lives in. And it was my mom and dad's house, and I got it after they died. And uh, it was quiet when they lived there. It was peaceful. It was very, very good for them. Now, there is a problem with the screaming kids at the daycare. And it's tremendous. Older people, which is Carla and my son, live next door to the daycare. The owner of the daycare now has no respect for persons next to them. They have none at all. There is no respect anymore. People don't really, really care. And recently, a young man was shot and killed. And what he believed in. And what he spoke out for, and that was Charlie Kirk. That is an example of what is happening and no respect. The reason nothing is being done about the screaming is because it doesn't affect you at all. It affects somebody else. Carla and my son, they can't sleep in. And they can't take naps because of the noise with the kids. My son has the heart condition. And both of them should be able to live in their home comfortably. And both of them should be able to live in their home comfortably, at peace and quiet. Children will only do what they are allowed to do. And today, children are not taught respect. Because adults don't care and they don't respect. I go to my son's house a lot. And you can, you can't hear yourself think. It's just tremendous. And you just don't expect that. And the workers think it's funny. And especially when the police arrive and they go through that, and it's just an ongoing thing all the time. But they think it's funny. And the owner and the workers fall into the same category. And that is no respect for other people because they just don't care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carla Sagrilo.
Yes, I'm Carla Sagrilo. I live at 103 North Westminster Drive. And I am directly behind the daycare center, I'm the first house there on Westminster I knew there was a daycare there when I moved in. I know kids are going to go outside and play. But they're not kids playing, they are kids screaming. And then when the rocks and things, you know, once or twice a ball comes in the yard, okay, fine, you know, I threw it back over the fence, nobody cares. So, now they've been throwing rocks more and more, and they're getting bigger and bigger. And like Russ has already explained, I have a very small dog. And she can be injured quite easily if one of those rocks happened to hit her. She does like to go in the backyard, that's why I bought that house with the fenced yard, was so that my dog would have access. Also, within the last year, I've had a major car accident. And two major surgeries that required a lot of recuperation. And I, I couldn't, I couldn't rest at my house. I was just a nervous wreck because I couldn't, couldn't turn off the noise, you know, to be able to rest and sleep and recuperate the way I needed to. And so I'm still having issues with my recovery from those surgeries. One was so bad, I actually had to go to Barnes Jewish to have the surgery done, it was that So, when I grew up, we played in the yard, that's fine. And I expected kids to play. But this is not kids playing. And I just think, I have had one interaction with the people over there. The fence is falling apart. And I wanted to go and find out who owned the fence. Went in the building, it took me twenty minutes pounding on the walls and the door and watching people walk by in the building. And they would not come and talk to me. Finally, somebody came and I said, they said, oh, they weren't the owners, they just worked there. I says, well, can you please leave a message for the, and I left my number for the owners to call me? Because I just, I just wanted to find out, you know, it's, it's a fence between the two properties. And I don't know whose it is, I don't know if it's a joint fence, I don't know if it's one theirs or if it's mine, you know? And never heard a word. Nobody's ever said anything. I don't even know who the owners are. But obviously, they've got workers there that are not respectful. They're not professional. And I just feel that, you know, as they've already, you know, told you many times of how, how hard it is for us to rest and relax. And I'm getting very anxious right now. I do suffer from anxiety and other conditions as well that is exacerbated by the constant noise all day long. And I just would prefer if you guys could do something, I mean, at least make it a professional business that will operate under professional courtesy. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Ron Sanders.
Well, now, it's been a while. My name is Ron Sanders, live at 976 Glen Oaks Drive. And tonight I decided I would come here and talk about peace. As y'all know, our city is one of the most peaceful, with an exception apparently, one of the most peaceful cities in the whole state. And juxtapose that to, you know, why? We go through our days, you know, going to our jobs, going to our recreation, living our lives, never thinking about why we live in such a peaceful world here. Because the rest of the world is not peaceful like this. The rest of the world, you can't live your whole life and never once have to think about somebody doing something bad to you. You know, it is so rare that people don't even think about that anymore. And that is because we have become very good at managing and harnessing the monopoly on violence. And who has that responsibility of making sure that the monopoly on violence is controlled, harnessed, and, and taken care of? That is the, the city structure and especially the police. Our police force have become experts at making sure that they created, according to just about everything, they have created one of the most peaceful places on earth here. Because they deal with the violence, they deal with the, they deal with making sure that they harness that monopoly on violence and power. And they take it away from anybody who wants to challenge that, who wants to do bad, criminals, people who just have no respect for one another. And I'm very glad that I got to speak about this tonight, because there's apparently a lot going on in our community that this addresses. Respect was mentioned. In order for us to have a peaceful city and a peaceful nation, we have to have respect. And we cannot have all of this without having a moral society. And I believe in Nixa here, we do. Overall, we do have a very moral society. But it, there's also another part of this. And that is the responsibility to make sure that we never abdicate that monopoly on violence. Whether it's the police not doing their job properly, or corruption creeping into the police force or our city, in our city structure, our city workers, our city elected officials and everything. Something to think about. We always have to make sure that we stand up for what's morally right and make sure that we always put that first. Because without that, corruption will creep in, our city will be challenged, people will show up to try to take away that monopoly on violence and do bad things. And it always starts with somebody thinking, ah, it's not that big of a deal. Even the smallest thing, like what we just heard about, is a big deal. Because it erodes that monopoly on violence, it erodes the moral compass of people, it erodes the people's sense of justice. And a sense of justice is where a lot of our moral beliefs come from. And we can be demoralized very easy if justice can't be found in our communities and in our society. So, I just wanted to say, our city police force is doing an awesome job. Chief Campbell's doing a great job. And so far, well, y'all got some work to do, but I think that we're doing a great job here. But that doesn't mean that the challenges go away. And that doesn't mean that you guys still don't have a great responsibility to make sure that justice is found for all of our people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right, we don't have anyone else that has currently signed up to speak, but if you would like to, I'll leave the visitor's section open a little bit longer and feel free to do so. And I will close the visitor's section. All right. Next up, first reading, Council Bill 2025-35.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2025-35, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Repealing Ordinance Number 2409 and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternative Program Supplement Agreement. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This may seem familiar, it should be, because it was approved at the last council meeting. It was after that last council meeting that it was discovered that the exhibit attached to the authorizing ordinance had an error in it. So this ordinance, if approved, would repeal that prior authorization to enter into this funding agreement with MoDOT for the Cheyenne Road Multi-Use Path with a corrected, repeal that authorization and replace it with authorization containing the corrected exhibit. That's really the gist of it. It's something you guys have already approved, just with the corrected exhibit. I'm available for any questions about that piece of it, the funding agreement, I'd have to defer to Public Works on. But with that, staff recommends approval.
Can you do a first and second read in the same meeting if it's not on the agenda?
Well, we...
I think I just saw the clerk, like, want to kill me for a second, so...
And if you declare an emergency, and we had conversations with Public Works about how urgently MoDOT needed this executed, so my understanding is, they, the, the answer is, we don't need an emergency.
Okay.
And if you recall, this agreement is really something that MoDOT has asked for because they're just moving funding from a different account. So they just want the agreement to reflect that. It probably doesn't even need to require contract amendment to do anyway, since it's MoDOT funding, but to keep their books in order, they're asking that the agreement be modified to reflect this change in where the funding is coming from, which means there isn't really an emergency, so we can't do the first and second read at the same meeting.
Okay.
So this will be back at the next meeting.
And Mr. Russell, you don't see this setting us back at all?
No.
It's all that matters. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? All right, no questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Anything further from council? All right, moving on. Ms. Coffey, could you please read Council Bill 2025-36?
First reading, Council Bill Number 2025-36, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Amending Several Provisions of Chapter 117 for the Purpose of Authorizing the Use of Modular Homes in the R1 Residential Zoning District. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor, council, good evening. To provide some background on where this is coming from, probably about well over a year ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission asked staff to look into our residential zoning codes to see if there was any unnecessary, what we can call red tape, to allow for different types of house construction here in the city of Nixa. So upon review, we learned that we have this residential modular home subdivision that is in our code. Modular homes are, again, they're constructed off-site in a facility to probably either our building code standards or even higher building code standards. And then they're shipped in modules or modulators to a construction site and fastened to a permanent foundation as your typical stick-built house would be. So, we kind of viewed this as slightly unnecessary at this time, as, again, it was, it was very restrictive, it required modular homes to be placed on a two-acre site, basically set at least a two-acre site, and it was set up similar to what you would see as like a mobile home park. So, with the advances that are happening in the modular home construction and also the different alternative ways to construct homes, we felt that it was just easier just to add those, or this option to the R1 Single Family Zoning District. So this zoning, this code change in front of you tonight involves a lot of different code sections. Primarily what they're doing is eliminating that RH, RMHS zoning district, there's a similar one too, and I'm going to mess this up, so, the modular home zoning, or modular home subdivision, that's the one that we're concerned with tonight. So again, what we're doing is updating the definition for modular homes, adding it to the R1 Zoning District, eliminating the language associated with the RMHS zoning district. Okay, let me go through this, make sure, make sure I didn't miss anything here. Okay, so the section you see, that is the zoning code update for the R1 Zoning District, and you see underlined, we're adding the R1 zoning, or modular homes to it. And again, this, this zoning district doesn't dictate how homes are constructed, so it doesn't say it has to be a stick-built home, which is your traditional construction style that we see around here. It just says that it's for single-family detached residential uses. If you go to the next one, that is the definition update for what a modular home is. So again, we adding some, we're adding some language to kind of make it a little more obvious as to what a modular home is, and we're removing some unnecessary language. So again, the main thing on this is that it's transported in modules or constructed or assembled and then constructed and assembled on-site, and that there is, does not have its own running gear or chassis. So that's kind of the big thing in our, in our definitions as to what a manufactured home or a mobile home is, is that it does, a mobile home does have its own running gear and chassis. So again, these are considered to be homes that are constructed off-site and then put together on-site. I'm just making this very clear. So if we go to the next one, that is us eliminating the, the R, go, you're going too far, go up. Right there, that red one. So we're eliminating the language for the RMHS zoning district, but we are leaving the residential manufactured home community zoning district, that is the one that is for mobile home parks. So again, we still have that language and it is separate, but we are eliminating the specific language for the modular homes and just allowing that as a use in the table of approved uses. So as we continue down, there is the development standards that we are also eliminating, and then it gets to the big one, which is the table of approved uses. If you look off to the right of the table, you'll see that RMHS zoning district, the only thing in that zoning district is modular structures. So again, we are looking to eliminate that, if we scroll down a little bit further, eliminate that zoning district, that whole column in the table, and just move that X over to an approved use in the R1 zoning district. Okay. So again, with all the advances that have been happening in the modular home world, you know, there's alternative methods to how homes can get, can get constructed. We are seeing in Nixa now, or not Nixa, but in the state of Missouri, we're seeing 3D-printed homes start to come into the area. Springfield, I think, is scheduled to get one here soon. And that is basically setting up a big machine and it just runs the outline of concrete, basically builds your house up through concrete. And then there's all sorts of different home styles that you can basically build a house Lego-style now, where you can just get all the pieces and just assemble it. So again, we're, it's not necessarily a drastic change, because again, these homes, whether we don't regulate how they're necessarily constructed, they're added to a permanent foundation on a site, on a building site. So that aspect is still the same, they're still hooked onto our utilities, they don't have a running gear, they, they're not going anywhere. They're most times constructed in a clean environment off-site and then transported on-site. So this could eliminate a lot of inspections for inspectors. It can cause shorter construction times. It could potentially lead to slightly less expensive homes. So again, if you're paying attention to the nation, there's obviously a housing shortage, so this is a way to allow alternative and quicker construction methods into our community with the end goal that it's still going to be a single-family home attached to a foundation. So staff does recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this agenda item, and they voted unanimously five to zero to recommend approval to city council. If you have any questions, I am available.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, I have a concern. I've, some modular homes are very, very nice, but I'm concerned about how it would affect resale value in homes near them if someone just put one in a neighborhood that's established already. Do you think there'd be a problem with that?
A lot of subdivisions that have HOAs or covenants, they already restrict this type of activities, or what type of construction activity they can have in that subdivision. Again, the city would allow it, but HOAs could still not allow this type of construction activity. I can't really speak to the resale value. I mean, it's going to look like a single-family detached home.
Like I said, some are really, really nice.
Yeah, when you get into that, you're-- it's more along the lines of, I guess, curb appeal if people wanted to live by there, because they can't pull, when they're doing an appraisal, they can't pull comps on something that's completely different than what your house is. So, but yeah, some of them, you can't even tell that they're any different.
And we don't have any aesthetics ordinance, so a new single-family home can have corrugated tin on the outside of it, so chose. Yeah. Just never know what the finished product will look like.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gobby.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions from council. I will open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, do so at this time.
Yes, sir. I don't get to get here very often, so I just had one question. Ron Sanders, by the way. Would this also cover 3D-printed houses? Because that's becoming a thing as well.
Oh, yeah.
Where they'd be printed 3D on-site?
Yep. You're going to buy a big printer and start 3D printing? There you go.
Scott Jones, I have one question about, because, like you said, the 3D-printed, some of these, you can't tell it's not a stick-built house. Some of them are really nice. What do we have in there? Because technically, you know, your definition was it's built in sections, brought in, put on it, attached to a permanent foundation. Is there anything in there stopping it from being shipping containers?
Essentially, no. There's nothing currently stopping shipping containers either, as long as it's a perpetual permanent foundation.
That's the problem I see. When you, somebody asked about decreasing home values, because those are popular, and if you're in the right area, I mean, some of them are kind of cool.
Yep.
But you're sticking in the middle of a bunch of houses? Stick-built houses, more traditional, the other nicer ones we're talking about, and now all of a sudden, we're going to allow shipping containers?
Scott, doesn't it still have to meet building code requirements, though?
He is right. I've seen some pretty cool-- nah, I wouldn't want it next to my house, but they're neat. Maybe a good hunting cabin or something, but-- That is, that is true. All right. Very good questions. Thank you, guys. And I'll leave the public hearing open if anyone else would like to speak. Go for it.
Second question just popped into my head. Isn't there a city ordinance that prohibits non-similar things being built next to other pre-existing homes? Like what happened off of Glen Oaks Drive? Wasn't there a city ordinance that was involved in that?
What's the verbiage with that? Like, not looking exactly like it, but in, kind of in harmony with the surroundings? It's been a minute.
Well, the, if I remember correctly, the argue, one of the arguments off of Glen Oaks Drive was that they were trying to build houses that were not similar to the surrounding houses in that, on that particular road. In other words, they were trying to build hundred-thousand-dollar houses next to half-million-dollar houses. And I think maybe that ordinance would preclude building a container house next to a half-a-million-dollar mansion or some, or a million-dollar mansion? I don't--
Oh, that's right. It was the, I got so confused during all that, because we had the HOA. The covenants and restrictions kept getting brought up.
The neighborhood doesn't have an HOA, but there were covenants and restrictions that came with the original owner of the property that said it could not be subdivided into smaller lots. That's what kept it from happening.
But I guess, I mean, you could take shipping containers and make them look just like a house if you're--
But they don't come fully equipped, like a modular house does. It's completely put together.
Yeah.
Shipping containers, you put together and then make them, you build them out, and I think that's a total different, totally different thing.
Agreed.
Although they can be very nice, too.
Man, squirrel moment. All right. All right. If no one else would like to speak, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Anything else from council?
I just want to say, Mr. Sanders and Mr. Jones, both those questions were asked at the planning and zoning by the commissioners, just to kind of cover those bases as well. So thank you for your questions and concerns on that.
All right. If nothing else, we have hit the 95-minute mark, so we're going to take a five-to-10-minute recess real quick.
All right.
Any actual questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Morris. No other questions. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. You guys want to farkle for it?
Oh, boy. All right. Ron Sanders. This is a good one. Make sure we get the soundbite right. We need traffic circles at every single one of these locations. Thank you. I'm just kidding.
I was honestly surprised. Have you seen the finished Kansas Expressway extension? They had two good opportunities for traffic circles. Missed it. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As the dedicated economic development organization representing Chobe Christian County, I felt the need to come tonight just to also express our support for this effort. We do believe that this could result in economic growth and opportunity for the City of Nixa. So, we definitely support this, and we just wanted to quickly communicate that and say that we ask that you approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nobody else. I will close the public hearing. Any further questions or comments from council?
This is probably better than my idea, just build the road right up to 160 and then make MoDOT do it. But it's probably the right process. Sometimes my ideas aren't the best.
All right. Nothing further, I will accept a motion.
It's a made.
I'll second it.
I have a first by Mr. Peterson, a second by Ms. Graham. Roll call, please.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
JRTs.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next up, onto our resolutions section. Ms. Coffee, please read Resolution 2025-51.
Resolution number 2025-51. A resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to solicit proposals for pool basin painting services presenting is Parks Director Matt Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is getting a little ahead, but we are planning for 2026, and part of our 2026 budget process did a lot for pool basin painting. We are wanting to go ahead and get that proposal out now. We will not accept or award until the budget is approved. However, this allows us to get this on a calendar for a vendor, let them start planning for our pool to be painted yet this spring. And so before the upcoming season. The pool gets painted every three to four years, depending on the paint that's down, how that's doing, chipping, that type of thing, in ensuring that we are protecting the concrete basin of the pool. And so this will be an entire pool repaint to be done in the spring of 2026. Any questions?
Do you have to sandblast the old paint off to do this, or what?
Not at this time. We have done that. Man, you're gonna test my brain now. 2016 or 2017, I believe, is when we blasted it last down all the way to concrete. This one, they'll just be able to clean, so they'll power wash and clean and be able to apply two coats of paint. And they'll check all of our caulking seams and things throughout the pool as well to make sure that the pool basin is still solid.
Do we get to pick the color?
I mean...
Red. Make it red.
Maybe. Probably not. White is usually your best color. I know it's kind of boring.
Just put it out there.
The color does help the lifeguards, and the safety component is the biggest.
Our neighborhood has a dark one, and you can't see much. It's good for hide and seek.
It'd be cool, I mean, you can see some cool ones that way, but white is the best, and it typically weathers the best. And so we'll probably stick with the current, but talk to me.
Ooh, yellow.
What about orange?
No.
With yellows.
Yeah, glitter.
Now we're all over the charts.
Brown.
Yeah, glitter.
If that is something you guys want, before I put this...
No, we're good, man. White's great.
Can you put a mermaid and a turtle on the bottom, too?
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. You gotta have some fun, all right? Any actual questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Morris. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this or have a recommendation of pool color, feel free to do so at this time.
I think we should put a mermaid and a turtle on the bottom. The design, kind of cute.
He's over budget already. He's not getting fancy pool colors.
I don't know if you remember the last time you brought the pool up. All right. If no one else... I will close the public hearing. It really did happen. If nothing else, I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, you will.
I'll second.
I have a first by Ms. Graham, a second by Ms. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? Eyes have it, motion carries. Couple things. I definitely just wanted to thank all the guys in the back of the room, back in that corner area. You know, a lot of people don't realize what it takes to be on some of those teams and those departments. Sometimes it's going out late at night to fix issues, and no matter what you're doing, you have to leave. I really appreciate all the work you guys do, day in and day out, nights and weekends. Special thanks to Dozer for coming out in all sorts of times and fixing random stuff and trying to piece stuff together to make things work. We got to do that a couple times in the past week or so, so I appreciate you very much. And I know there's a lot of people in the city that do as well. So, there's certain, I think there's certain things that get overlooked at times, and just really appreciate everything you guys do. Also, it's not a secret or anything what we did today, is it? Okay. Wanted to also thank Walmart. They are sponsoring the mayor's tree lighting this year, and we got to go shopping today. It was a lot of fun. We thought we had a lot of stuff, and then realized we had only spent like half the money. So, I can't wait to see what you guys got after I left. And it's just, it's really cool to have local businesses that always step up for our community. And not just Walmart. Not all the businesses we have here, if people are in need, they help out.
They also donated a truckload, and I mean a truckload, of candy for us to throw out at the Christmas parade, so...
It's good, so I won't run out in the first hundred yards.
It kind of looked like I was five years old, robbed of Walmart, and loaded my truck full of candy and toys. But that's what we did today.
That's awesome. Yeah. It's ridiculous how much candy we throw out at the parades. Pretty cool, but we'll just pray for no rain this year. I haven't been very lucky for parades. I believe that is all. Tomorrow night, for those who are interested or are going, the Christian County 100 Club is holding their annual banquet. So, that's another great organization that we have here in Christian County that helps out the families of first responders. There's just so much going on lately. Next, the girls volleyball team, third in state, pretty awesome. Next, the football team, it's looking pretty good, don't want to jinx them. But yeah, there could be another one there. Anything else from council?
I was gonna ask, when do we, or want to discuss the funding of that Explorer Nixa? When or how do we go about doing that?
Think about that, yes. Thank you. Think about that. Jot down any questions you might have. They're always available if we have any additional questions. And then we can, I would assume at the next meeting, we will discuss that. And we can probably go ahead and, if you wouldn't mind, providing with the traffic study and this, maybe shoot us the available, what the available balance would be on our economic development funds? If we were to fund both of those? Or you can tell us right now, that's fine.
The economic development savings account has $826,046.86 in it.
Okay. That's sitting pretty strong. And the one thing just to think about with that fund, while this won't really impact that a lot, because we're only, it's 30,000 to come out of there, one of the main things to really think about on that fund is if something, an opportunity, was to come up for the city. It could be, you know, it could be a huge manufacturing company that is gonna employ a lot of people, have higher-paying jobs. It could be a company that's gonna provide a lot of sales tax revenue for the city that could be life-changing for parks and police and everyone else. Sometimes to get those places, you have to offer some sort of incentives, and it might be getting the infrastructure in place or whatever that may be that falls into the negotiation phase of it. But I don't think, personally, I don't believe that 30,000 is gonna affect that too much. Because it's gonna be so successful that we'll see that return tenfold. All right. Good question, though. But yeah. Any questions, just let us know. Or I think, I mean, you all have Kristen's contact info and Whitney's, so don't hesitate to ask. And we also have two of our wonderful staff members on the committee there. Anything further? Anything else from staff?
Just a quick reminder, city offices will be closed November 27th and 28th for Thanksgiving. I was gonna say Christmas, but it's Thanksgiving.
Not there yet.
And I'll keep on your calendars, the mayor's tree lighting is December 5th. That's a Friday night from 5:00 to 8:00, followed by Sunday, the 7th, our Christmas parade, beginning from the community center at 2:00 o'clock and running the parade route.
And if anyone would like to be on a float, we can definitely do that. I'm doing a trailer this year that way. If it is raining, I'm gonna get a big old pop-up canopy. So, Forgy doesn't have to run after my truck with a raincoat to give to me. It's always fun. Anything else? Fair enough. Mr. Peterson?
I move that city council go into closed session under Section 610-021-1, 3, and 13 of RSMO. I also move that this closed session records related there, too, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under Section 610-021 of RSMO, and that the city council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
JRTs.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Sean Lucas.
Yes.
Thank you all.